Good afternoon, everyone. It's Wednesday, March 13th, 2024, 2:00 PM, 1400 hours. This is the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Mayor Rostek?
Present.
Mr. Mayor Kerr?
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Here.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
All are present.
City Attorney, we do the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
Our Heavenly Father, we come humbly before you to ask your divine guidance and help in our deliberations today. Blessed the members of the Commission and the citizens that are present, we pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. This we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agendas written.
Do we have a second?
We have an item that we need to add to the agenda that was requested by the city attorney.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to add to the agenda as item 12E under contracts and agreements, the easement agreement for condominium A, actually condo A Company LLC.
Okay. Should I request to pull what I was gonna pull now then under this or wait till later?
I think you need to do that when that agenda item comes up there.
Okay, oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like to modify that. I'd like to approve the agenda with the addition of 12A as mentioned by the city attorney.
By what? 12B.
12B.
12E as an elephant.
Oh, E!
He isn't Edward. He isn't Edward.
Is Clara?
Did you get all that, Clara?
Is there an opportunity for discussion? If we're on to consent agenda, I don't, I thought we were gonna do approval of the minutes first. I have a request for the order of the items before we get to that. Is this, is this part of consent agenda?
Not yet, no.
No, sorry then.
No, that's further down the list.
Sorry, sorry.
But if you want to make a or recommend a change in the agenda, this is the time to do that.
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to move item C to be first in the public hearings.
Item 10C?
10C moved up to 10A.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second then?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
I will.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next up is proclamations. I don't think we have any, do we, City Manager?
No.
Okay, all right. And then we have presentations, the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach, Chamber of Commerce, 2023 Community Partner of the Year.
I'd like, Max, if you could come up to the podium, I'm gonna use the podium. So Mayor and Commission, I get them, Robin Gomez, the city manager, and we were recognized, the city was last, or a couple of weeks ago, at a lunch by the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce. They chose our Recreation Department, and Max McColsky is here representing the department, the Community Partner of the Year for 2023. I do wanna thank Max, and unfortunately Jay Hatch cannot be here, the Recreation Director, but just wanted to give you some very quick overview of all of the work that led to the recognition. I think a lot of people think that in Recreation, folks go to work every day and just let, check people in for rec classes and/or take care of kids after school. And yes, they do that, but in addition to that, not only do they maintain the grounds and the parks, particularly Rock Park here to, behind us to our left, right, they also plan, produce, and take care of all the details of the probably about 50 special events throughout the year, from the seafood festival to the Merry Market at the end of the year. The Merry Market, which is kind of the main reason the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach Chamber provided this award, because they partner with the city to host the event. We had over 8,000 people come to the park that one day back on December 9th, which was the same day as the boat parade. But Recreation helps coordinate, plan all the details for those events in addition to maintaining three softball fields, a full recreation facility with multiple classrooms and rooms for after-school, summer care. Right now, we have how many kids staying at the rec center? About 40 kids during the spring break program that we run through our Recreation Center. Also leagues for youth, for basketball, for soccer. We coordinate with the Madeira Beach Youth Baseball and Softball for the programs that they run. We just finished, we, I'm saying, we, I didn't do anything except show up and help out as needed and eat a few hot dogs, et cetera. For the college softball games, where we had nearly about 27 schools and colleges and universities, many from up north, that played probably close to 80 games over the last three weekends right here in our Rock Park softball fields. So I will tell you that I spoke with hundreds, well, probably a couple hundred families that came here who absolutely love the area. I did not hear from one player who was upset playing here, even the ones that struck out three or four times during the game, because they're playing at a place that they had, most of them had never been here, never seen, did not believe that people actually live, work, you know, learn and play here. It truly is a great, great city to be in. I told them, well, if you were to hang around here long enough, you would see Jay, Max, or Mako, or CJ, some of the Recreation Staff, or myself occasionally walking around in our robes because we spend so much time here. And that's what the men and women in Recreation Department did over those three weekends. They spent upwards of 15 hours in a day, because not only do they coordinate with the organization that hosted the games, the Spring Games, but they also maintain all the fields, the facility, the concession area, the restroom area. So a great, great thank you to Max and all the staff, and I think a very deserving award, the Community Partner of the Year. Thank you. Over so we can take a photo of this. If I could get this to work properly. Thank you. Thank you, Max, and Recreation Staff. And I forgot to mention Final Friday out at the Johns Pass and all those other events that happened at Johns Pass Village and Boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Next up is public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. Please come up, we'd love to hear what you have to say. Please come up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Happy Price, I live at 13319 Boca Seaga Avenue here in Madeira Beach. I'm here in the capacity as the interim chairperson for the Library Board. Wanted to give you guys a library update, and I put a memo down because I feared this may last more than three minutes, and most of it you wanna just peruse anyway. Thought I'd let you know, we knew have, we have had our elections, and we have a new chairperson, which is David Will, Mayor of Reddington Beach. I'm gonna remain vice chairman. Treasurer will remain Debitoff from Treasure Island, and our secretary, Rick Negrabsky, from North Reddington Beach. Our fundraiser in January was successful. We brought in, or we netted, profited $4,282.83, so we're loving that. And we're considering doing a Food for Thought event for our next fundraiser. We also have a Buy a Brick campaign for anyone who would like to buy a brick, $100. It's gonna go in the patio of the library. This is the one that our secretary bought for Madeira Beach, it's really cool. Madeira Beach loves its books and its library, so that's available. And you can just go on the website, GulfBeachesLibrary.org, and it's right there on the homepage for additional income. The library will be adding paid parking only during times that the library is not open, okay? This is really just to grab some of the special event overnight, or, you know, late evening parking, and also the Sunday beachgoers that park there. I've walked out of there after a meeting and every slot is full. So we thought, well, let's, let's see what we can do about putting in some meters. And thank you, Robin, for giving us a hand with that. So as you can see, we're really trying to not increase the amount we ask our cities every year, all right? Finally, the fun stuff, we opened up our 2000, our 1968 time capsule, and we're also going to be reinserting it back into the column for this year to be opened in 50 years. So all the libraries are asking the participating towns to come up with something that goes in the time capsule. Now, I brought it with me so you can see how big it is. This is actually the time capsule that came out of the, of the column. We're gonna put it back in, but also gonna have a little escape hatch so it doesn't take us two and a half hours to find it, or whoever's alive in 50 years finding it. And I wanted to show you just a few of the cool things in there. There's pictures of the groundbreaking of the library, pictures of the library being built. Really cool, these are all at the library, by the way. The Gulf Beach Journal, which I believe was probably the equivalent to our beach beacon, headline, "If the Pass Bridge Should Fail," I mean, really kinda cool. We had a Madeira Beach bank, and they put in some cool stuff, the cost of services and like their resources and things like that. They also added two uncirculated JFK Kennedy half dollars in there. So I thought that was kind of an interesting thing to put in. There was also, and this is just a smathering, the Madeira Beach Elementary School, it's kind of their week's worth of their bulletins. Lunches were 35 cents back then, things of that nature. Facts about the library, I found out the library cost $120,000 to build, and half of it came from a grant, so that's cool. And then we also have from the Evening Independent, which later became St. Petersburg Times and Evening Independent, the, they put in some printing plates, which is cool. Nixon Captures Presidency. So this is the kind of stuff that goes in. I have a list in your memo of some other things to give you some ideas. And we also, during our fundraiser, had a suggestion box out there, and people have been putting in suggestions. So I listed some of the suggestions, which were pretty cool. iPhone and charger, turnlist information, you know, a sticker from the Trash Pirates, things of that nature that will remind us of Madeira Beach. So 50 years from now, they can look at it. So I'll be coming back to you and reminding of you of the October 1 deadline, but I wanted to give that to you as soon as possible, all right? Any questions about what's going on? I mean, honestly, there is two or three things happening there every day. There's free tax help, which you do have to sign up for. All, all the members have access to New York Times on a daily basis. There's knitting circles, there's mediation every Friday, which pretty much fills up. There's, you know, mommy-baby storytime and father-daughter stuff, and, you know, financial clubs and all sorts of good stuff going on. Every time I go in there, there's a lot of people using the rooms and a lot of kids running around, so we really have a gem right here in our backyard. Very cool.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Thank you, Happy. Love the excitement.
Well, it's fun. And I must give kudos to Stan Silverstein, he's been a wonderful interim library director, really on top of things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment, please come up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Chuck Dillon, 529 Lillian Drive. Haven't seen you guys in a while, I've been kinda busy taking care of other things and that. What I'm gonna talk about today is there was something that I heard a lot about, and there was a lot of disconcert. It's basically Tom and Kitty Stewart Parking Lot. I never really thought I would be kinda doing this, but basically, right now, there's three resident parking, two handicaps, plus all the regular things. What I would propose is two resident parking, two motorcycle golf cart spots, and one handicap. What that does is it increases three pay spots. The one handicap and the two residents do away with those. What the residents gain are two golf spots and lose one dedicated spot. So the way I look at it, it's a win-win. I mean, you know, the residents would still have basically four spots because the residents have golf carts. And there's many, many golf carts from the city, and golf carts are becoming more and more prevalent. And you occasionally have people coming down in golf carts from the other cities, and if they would park in the golf cart motorcycle parking spot, they would pay. But if the residents live here and they come to the beach in their golf carts, they would park in the golf carts as opposed to a parking spot. And it's, it's something that I kinda feel is a win-win. I mean, you'll, and far be it from me, I was one of the people that was trying to, on the last administration, get designated parking, and, and one of the Commissioners said, well, we've got all the parking on the street, right on 141st, which is true. And the amount of monies that were received from that parking lot were big. And I don't know what the final outcome was and as to whether or not it was last meeting or the meeting before that it came up because of the trial period. But once again, I kinda think that this would be fine, because, one, we're losing all the money onto handicap, because handicaps don't pay for parking, I believe. So right there, by changing the handicap to a resident parking, there's no loose, no loss there, but one of the spots becomes residence then. And eliminating the two that are next to each other and turning those into pay lots, pay parking, will in essence generate three pay, three pay parking areas. Say that fast. I mean, you know, so, you know, like I say, I would have been here when that one meeting was brought up, but I wasn't available at the time, so, but I mean, but I just like to follow through, which I do on most things. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment on items that aren't on the agenda? Come up, please.
I'm Edwards, District One. I've already mentioned this to a couple of the Commissioners, Mr. Gomez, but I think the city did an excellent job with the paving on Gulf Lane and did a professional job. I think it took care of some of the drainage issues, and I thank you all for that. I mean, it looks so brand-new and everything. The only thing we might do is just kinda repaint the curb going out to the, to the beaches and maybe some of the parking bumpers, so it looks new, but otherwise, it was a very professional job. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind comments. Anyone else, anything that's not on the agenda, please come up. Okay, no other public comment, we'll close public comment then. Next up is item eight, approval of the minutes. And we have the 2024 February 14th BOC regular meeting.
Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, do we have a motion to approve them? There's any comments?
Yeah, I don't have any comments. I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I second. All right, thank you, City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. I have nothing there. All right, the next item up then is public hearings. And I would like to entertain that we postpone this. We haven't had a workshop on this in months. The Planning Commission's had three, and there's been significant changes in this. I would like to see us go, this go to a workshop, if we could.
Mayor, you need to make clear exactly what you're talking about in relation to the four public hearings. I think-
It would be item A.
Well, we moved item 2023-01 up to A.
So it would be B then? I mean, we would have moved it to B or moved it down the list. One of the, it's, the one I'm talking about is ordinance 2024-02, Open Accessory Structures, First Reading and Public Hearing. That we would have to set a definitive date for that hearing, which would be the next BOC meeting. However, I would like to see us have a workshop on this, considering there's been three with the Planning Commission, and we have a lot to talk about, there's some significant changes.
I agree with it.
I have no problem with that myself.
Okay, do-
I don't have any problem with it, we can do that.
Okay, do, do we have a motion then to-
It'd be a motion to postpone to the next regular BOC meeting.
And then to add an agenda item to the BOC workshop to talk about it.
Correct.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to delay the-
Postpone?
Postpone ordinance 2024-02, Open Accessory Structures. To postpone the first reading and send it back to a workshop for consideration prior to the first reading.
We still need the date. When is, when is, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we need a specific date since we're postponing it.
The next Commission workshop is on Wednesday, March 27th.
Okay, and then the-
And the meeting is on Wednesday, April 10th, the next regular Commission meeting.
So this would be postponing the regular to regular meeting on April 10th, but you're gonna have an intervening workshop on that?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the motion then.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, so then we're gonna move ordinance 2023-01, Johns Pass Village Activity Center, up to the top of the list now, as requested.
And I'll go ahead and read that ordinance by title only, Mayor. This is ordinance 2023-01, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, adopting the Madeira Beach Johns Pass Village Activity Center Plan, providing for an introductory statement of plan purpose and overview, providing for background, history, and community engagement, providing for planned area, existing and proposed uses in density/intensity standards, and distinct character districts. Providing for transportation impacts and connectivity. Providing for coastal high-hazard area considerations. Providing for planning and urban design principles. Providing for implementation strategies. Providing for Transmittal II in consideration by Ford Pinellas and the Countywide Planning Authority. Providing for Transmittal to the Florida State Department of Economic Opportunity for their review and comment. Providing for the filing of this amendment in the Office of the City Clerk. Providing for conflict. Providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-01 by title only. I would remind the Commission that this is a special area plan. In pursuit to your charter, Section 4.5(c), it requires a supermajority or four-fifths vote to pass.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this first? We'd love to hear what you have to say on this. Please come up.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Paul Tilka, North Bay Shore Drive. I think the thing I want to express is the density relative to the state of Florida. This is a chart or graph that I came up with showing Pinellas County here, which is the most dense-populated county in the state of Florida. And the second one is Broward County, which is this one, and it's the second-most populated county, okay? And then down at the bottom, I have the number of people per square mile of Madeira Beach. We exceed the Pinellas County average, and in fact, by a great deal more because the current census is 4,080 here. So that's the point I wanna make as you go forward with planning, because things are to the limit. I, I just can't see how we're going to accommodate any more large development projects. So that's the essence of what I have to say. I think it's up to you and to consider what all of this is gonna lead to. Now, I understand that the Johns Pass Village, that from listening to the city staff, there would be no increase in density. I just simply don't believe it. I think there are exceptions, and at some point, there'll be developers come in and give you their perspective on how it all ought to be developed. So that's the basic. The other comment I'll make briefly is having a meeting during the daytime, you leave out all the working people in the city. And I, I think something like this should come before a broader group, or at least give an opportunity for other residents to come forward with their expressions. So that's all I have to say, but please consider where the density is going to lead us. Eventually, it's got to stop, so, thank you.
Thank you for your kind comments, sir. Anyone else, please come up.
Hi, everybody, Commissioners and Mayor, and everybody else here, City Manager Clara and everybody else here. I am on 14093 North Bay Shore Drive. I've been here about two and a half years. I love this city. I'm hoping that I am the one opening that capsule in 50 years. So your decisions really mean a lot to me. And I don't like providing an opinion unless I've done my homework. So I just found out about this yesterday, thanks to my neighbor Paul, who has been here for 80 years. So he has seen all of the changes to Madeira, the population growth over that time, and that's why he voices his concern. So I went back through what I could find on the Johns Pass Activity Center. I wrote you all an email, and thank you for, for reading it, and I also want to stop to say thank you. I am on civil service, so I know how much time, energy, work this all takes, so thank you all. But I will say, in reviewing the videos and information, there were concerns. One, there were two of the, I only watched two of the three workshops, because I could not attend, so I watched those. And in both, about 30 and 50 minutes in, a question was posed as to what this would do to our population density and how it would affect a citizen. It wasn't answered. It wasn't answered. It was skirted around, and not intentionally, I think so truly because it had not been resolved. There was a resolve to fix a map and present that, which was done on 2/28, two weeks ago, and presented to you all. It was not defined or shown which properties within the activity zone did not meet the requirements and could not be rebuilt. Because one of the fundamental purposes of this center is to allow us to rebuild, right? That this area, should it flood. There, this, this is, and when I review that, that is not what is being accomplished. In the Johns Pass Resort area, most of those buildings meet the current regulations. And I'd love to know if I'm wrong. I apologize if I'm misrepresenting it. But from what I could do this morning, in a couple hours' time, this is almost doubling, without question, what people can do in those areas. And I don't think the questions have been answered, and I don't see the homework have been done. And so I am very concerned if we are going to pass this today. I'm coming from my job. It's 2:00 PM in the middle of the day. I am concerned. So I appreciate you all. I think you're doing a good job. It's not easy work, but I am very concerned. So, thank you. Any questions or is that...
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else have public comment? Please come up. We'd like to hear what you have to say. Once we close public comment, that's going to be it. It'll go to the Commissioners. Please come up.
Happy Price, 13319 Boca Seega Avenue, Madeira Beach, Florida. I hadn't planned to talk on this, but wow, this has been going on for a while. From what I understand, the county has labeled our Johns Pass Village as a very low-density area, which resulted in, if it ever got blown away in a hurricane or something, we could never rebuild it. I sat up here and I voted for it, to have it an activity center, at least four times that I can remember. And it's been changing. I understand that. People have input. It takes a long time. But from what I understand, most of the people up here agree with it. Certainly, the county commissioners agree with it. There are areas like Cory Avenue or other areas that are even, like, less built up, already designated as activity centers. There's like a whole strip along the beach. It doesn't mean we're going to be building 10-foot buildings. It just means we have the ability to put one building on top of the other and have some density that would fit our town. So I would trust the commission and the planning department and everyone else who comes after to make the right decision, if something should happen to Johns Pass Village, that they would make the right decision to put it back or put something very similar back. I mean, there's blighted areas in there that I think need some attention today. But that's okay. If it's not the time to do it, it's not the time to do it. Just come to the commission, make your spiel and see what comes up. But I'm concerned that we will lose, like, the largest free tourist attraction on the west coast of Florida and not have that as part of Madeira Beach. That's, I live down the street from it. It's part of my identity. I walk down there all the time. Everyone who comes to my house goes over there, do my Christmas shopping there, drink all the margaritas and eat all the pizzas, everything else. It's a blast. I would really hate to see that go away and go down to the density that the county currently has it. In my opinion, it definitely needs to be changed. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I'm sorry you can't come back up, but... Anybody else want to offer public? Please come up.
Hello. Ooh, that was a little loud. Katie Bowman, 701 Sunset Cove. I would hate to see Johns Pass go away too. And if something of this would allow it to rebuild as it is after some disaster, that would be awesome, because I love going there too. What my problem is, is when a developer could come in and request PD, and I understand it's expensive to do all that, but the numbers went up too high. So if there's any way that the numbers on a proposed development that increases the amount of rooms, far, all that stuff, if we could just take those numbers down, because I think, what, the max is like 100 or something? Well, let's go back to where it was. And from, it was one of the meetings here, or maybe in Pinellas County, they said something that we could change the numbers. And it's up to y'all, you know, if you'd want to do that. So I just thought I'd bring that part up. Okay?
Well, thank you kindly.
Thank you all.
Any other public comment? Please come up.
Tom Edwards, District One. I've attended a lot of these meetings here where we've had this discussion. I just feel that the activity center should be concentrated within Johns Pass Village. It should be concentrated within the businesses that are there. I mean, it's extended over to Gulf Lane, going all the way up to 133rd, which didn't need to be. It could have stayed, if you had to include some of those condos and motels there, you could have gone to 129, 130th. But even now, I think you still could discount Gulf Lane and just keep it within the Johns Pass Center as the activity center. I think it just went too wide.
Thank you so much. Please come up, sir. We'd love to hear what you have to say.
Jerry Cantrell, 13322, First Street East. Before I say anything, am I allowed to speak without causing anyone to lose their ability to vote?
Yes, you have the ability to speak.
Does not cause anyone to lose their ability to vote, correct?
It does not cause your spouse to lose the ability to vote.
That's what I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So the one thing, just to reiterate, that is a concern, and I know that I was the one that asked the question. The max that I was told in the meeting, that there was 70 UPA. All right, if you go up to 100, that's a significant increase. It's almost 50% increase. What we know of, from looking at records as we can without the full data, is there's probably four buildings in the entire area that would be impacted. And yet, the proposal, if you go to 60 UPA, which would be by right, according to what you're planning, provides many of them between a 200 and a 300% increase in density. So I know the builders aren't going to be affected. They'll be okay. But what is the impact to the city? It's not that this doesn't need to be done, because I know we have setback concerns, things like that, and that this would address that. What does the density have to be in order to rebuild where we're at? I think that's the first of four bullets, is to address the ability to rebuild. That's what we're trying to get at. There are four that we can identify on our own, because it hasn't been clarified. There are four buildings that can't be rebuilt.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please come up.
Hi, guys. How is everybody? Doug Andrews, I have a business at 13601 Gulf Boulevard. Obviously, like Commissioner Price, I sat up here during this thing and voted on it many different times. And obviously, a lot of different opinions. And I'm glad nobody brought up the renowned expert that sent in the report from, that had never been to Johns Pass to contradict Dave Healy's just absolutely perfect report that he put out years ago, and God rest his soul. But guys, you got to remember one thing. We've beat this, kicked this can down the road a million times, and everybody's going to have an opinion on it. The people that are responding in the audience, and myself included, are not experts in this field, okay? I happen to know it pretty well, because I sat through hours and hours and hours, listening to every side of the story. Remember, though, your job today, okay, or whenever this is voted on in case it gets pushed back, your job's not to listen to people that aren't experts, okay? You have a staff of people here that are experts in their field. We've had consultants come in here, who are the best of the best, and every one of them has. And we've made changes to the plan to adhere to a lot of different things. But you're always going to have naysayers. You're always going to have people coming back to say that something's not right, or this is too much, or this is too little, or the setbacks of this. Okay, remember, though, this is a designation. This isn't the ability to go and build a water park and on a 20-story hotel. That's not what this is. It's a designation that the county commissioners obviously agree with, because that's why you guys got it back. So my point is, okay, your job is not to listen to the people that aren't experts out here. You are paying these people to come up with ideas and to come up with recommendations for you, okay? That's their job, to make recommendations for you. The people that are coming up, not questioning anybody's research, but they're coming up, they're not experts in the field. You've got experts that are telling you, they're making a recommendation for you to approve this, okay? My point is, don't listen to everybody else, including me. You are, you guys are not here to listen to people and vote the way they want you to. You're here to do what's in the best interest of the city, period. That is your job, okay? They elected you to make these decisions. They didn't elect you to make sure that you do what they tell you to do. So please remember that when you vote. Because if Johns Pass did, look, we had a fire there. That thing could have all gone up. If Deputy Johnson wasn't there that night at 3:00 in the morning doing patrol, that thing could have burnt for four or five hours, and we'd be facing something a whole lot different today than we are now, okay? So do your jobs, okay? Thank you.
Please come up, sir. We'd love to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I love hearing all of the stories about 10-story buildings and 20-story buildings and 2,000 hotel rooms. I can tell you, it's all a bunch of baloney. I own the largest parcel in Johns Pass by far, and the parcel's undeveloped. What you're looking at here isn't 100 units per acre. If I built something on my property, I can build 65 units, 65 hotel rooms. Not 200, not 500, not 10 stories. With a PD, I get the boost. I get a big boost. I can do 82, 17 additional units. Probably for the betterment of the city, but that's for another time. Right now, I own the building that houses Caddy's and Scully's. If this doesn't pass, and those structures, and Caddy's is right on the grate, a storm could take that out in a New York second, and it couldn't be rebuilt. I was there the other day, spring break, right? There's a line out the door. People want to come and enjoy the restaurant. Scully's was packed. Boardwalk Grill was packed. Kilwinds was packed. We get a bonus in the spring break time for the local businesses that probably eats up 60% of their sales throughout the whole year. That area needs to be protected. The whole purpose of the activity center, and it's a neighborhood center, the whole purpose was to allow the business owners. Guy Crutelli owns a building next door to mine. Talked to him today. He couldn't rebuild his building if a storm hit. Jeff Beggins owns a building right next door to that, on the boardwalk. Couldn't be rebuilt today. All of those businesses along the boardwalk and along Village Lane and all of those property owners, if this does not pass, and something, it doesn't have to be a major storm. Could be a flood. It could be a fire. Or a catastrophic event, like a hurricane hits, like Fort Lauderdale or Fort Myers, I'm sorry. The whole purpose of this is to allow these property owners to rebuild the village and maintain the quaintness of the village. Nobody's looking to build 20-story buildings in the past. It's imperative that this gets passed to save the property owners their property. Was there a density increase? Sure. But there was an FAR increase that includes parking, that limits you even further to how much you can build on a piece of property. And unfortunately, the people that don't know what those FARs and impervious surface ratios mean to a builder, I'm a builder. I'm a developer. I know what it means. We're talking about new construction that's very minimal, very minimal. And by right, we can do it today. So in order to save the pass, I implore all of you to make the right decision and vote yes and pass the neighborhood center. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Chuck Dillon, 529 Lillian Drive. I sat in your seats many times and listening to more of these people. There are all kinds of issues and items that had come up that we kind of kept kicking it back, kicking it back before it got to you guys. You guys kicked it back. Many of the past Commissioners kicked it back. But ultimately, what I believe where everybody was afraid of is that somebody would come in and do all of this big construction and stuff. Well, ultimately, it got down to the idea of, if anything changes, it's got to go before the planning committee and the Board of Commissioners to be okayed, which, and then also, like, you know, like many people have said, our staff. Well, our staff is not necessarily 100% perfect, but they're pretty close to it. I mean, you know, they do lots of research. Everybody has been researching this for years. And I had questioned, you know, in terms of a lot of the facts and everything. So, but ultimately, it gets down to the thing of, like, if something has to change, it's got to go before us again before it can be changed. At least that's my understanding. I don't know for a fact, but that's what I believe has to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'd love to hear what you have to say. It's your time.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Jeff Beggins. I live in 429 Boca Seega Drive in District One, Johns Pass, and I'm a property owner in the village. I just want to say, from the very beginning, from a resident, I've probably been to, probably close to a dozen workshops, neighborhood meetings in the past, at City Hall, on the weekends. It's been noticed, 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 noticed everywhere. All the workshops, all the commissions, all the pauses, the Pinellas County meetings, the back here, back to Pinellas, back to back. Saw it go higher. Saw it got knocked back down to what seems like everybody agreed to. And then what one of the gentlemen said before, this staff has been beating this around for years. And with their degrees, I think they did a phenomenal job on this one. So I just think anytime people say, well, we didn't know what happened, show up, right? I didn't want to show up on Saturdays with my kids and all this stuff anyway, but I did when it's important. So all the information was out there. I think it's been beat up forever. And I think the staff did a great job presenting it, the recommendations. I hope you guys do the right thing for the district and for the community and save the buildings that are there in the event of anything were to happen. And then watch responsible growth happen the way we want it to. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up. We'd love to hear what you have to say. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Kathy Collier, I live at 13145, Third Street East. I came here to learn, try to understand better what this is all about. I've been to a couple of meetings. I appreciate my education from you, and I appreciate the girl in the gray sweater for being so articulate. So I'm trying to get a grip on it. I understand everyone's talking about the pass, the pass, the pass. But for one thing, from the start, that word "activity center" struck me as a little too ambiguous because if it's all about Johns Pass, why did you have to bring it all the way down to 133rd? That's what makes me nervous, because, you know, we're not an activity center down that way at all, and I hope that we will never be, but that's what I'm confused about. Why bring it all that way if it's mostly about the people at Johns Pass being able to build? If there was a rebuild, if there was a disaster? So can anyone help me with that? Or maybe I'm the only one with a question. But thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other public comment? Please come up. Now's your time. Okay, we'll close public comment on this. We'll turn it over to the Commissioners.
Aren't we going to have a presentation by staff?
Oh, we have a presentation. I'm sorry, yes. I got ahead of myself. Sorry.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to mention, before we start, that I'm, we have a presentation. It's the same as the workshop, last workshops. But we are presenting both the activity center plan, which is what our attorney, Trask, read, and then also ordinance 2023-02, and that's... And that's actually changing the future land use map to that Activity Center. Okay. I know that you all have seen this presentation quite a few times, but we'll just kind of go over the basics, why we're proposing this Activity Center to this area. So the main components and the reasons of why an Activity Center, it's really to protect the village, protect the character that's down there, to assure that any new development is compatible with what is built in this area. We must be consistent with the countywide plan. And then this is really a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach. And then going to the relationship with local land regulations. So really, we're looking at these three plans. We have with the county, which is Ford Pinellas, their countywide plan, which includes the rules, strategies, and a map. And so every single parcel in Madeira Beach, in all of Pinellas County, has a designation with the county, which I'll show you in the next slide. And then locally, we have two plans. We have the Comprehensive Plan, which includes the future land use element and future land use map. So every parcel has a future land use. And then also locally, we have the Code of Ordinances. And within the Code of Ordinances, we have the Land Development Regulations. That's usually when we come in, we're asking for amendments here and there through planning. It's usually with the Land Development Regulations. Within that, we have the Zoning Districts. And then we have that corresponding zoning map. So all of these three plans really work together. The countywide plan and their categories, we, they set the intensities, densities, the impervious surface ratios. We're not allowed to exceed those standards. We have to be within what their plan allows. We can be less intense with the floor area ratio and the density, but we cannot exceed that. And so all three of these really work together. And this is what this looks like, all three of those maps. So on the left side, we have the countywide plan map, their categories. And then on the right side, these are our two local land use. So we have the future land use right here. This is with the Comprehensive Plan. Looks very similar to the countywide plan map. And also in the Comprehensive Plan and the countywide plan, it looks very similar. It's pretty broad intensities and the density is the units per acre and the impervious surface ratios and the general uses that are allowed. But it's really when you get to the zoning, when you see the setbacks, the height. Also in our code, you also have landscape requirements, sign requirements, all these nitty gritty things of usually what you think of, what can you do with your land? It's generally in the code or zoning, your zoning district. So all three of these really have to correspond with each other and work together. So going back in history, in 2007 and 2008, the city adopted inconsistent standards with the countywide plan. So that means that we adopted standards that exceeded what the countywide plan allowed. We're not allowed to do that. So current staff found this inconsistency, talked to Ford Pinellas, and we've been working with them since 2020 on this. If you remember, a few months ago, we really went through all of the zoning districts, all the commercial zoning districts, as well as the R3, the west side of Gulf Boulevard. And we lowered all of those standards so that now we're consistent with the county. So this is the previous densities and intensities. When I was saying back in 2007, 2008, when we adopted these standards that exceeded the county's plan. This is what our standards used to be. They're not this anymore. And we highlighted the areas where we exceeded those standards. So with the countywide plan, you can see, take retail and service category, this red area. The maximum temporary lodging units per acre was 40 in our Comprehensive Plan. It said 60 units per acre. We're not allowed to do that. So we had to reduce those standards along with the floor area ratio. That's really the ratio between, it's easiest to think of this as a ratio between the land area and the air-conditioned square footage. So you can see that we had inconsistencies in this red area as well as the resort area. That's the countywide plan, future land use category. And then that was our commercial, general, residential, office, retail, resort facilities, medium. So all those highlighted areas, that's where we exceeded those standards. And then we also have inconsistencies with the zoning and land use here on Pelican. And then there's inconsistencies all the way over here until 133rd, which is why the Activity Center expands over to this area. So what the current densities and intensities are now, this is after we made those changes in all those zoning districts as well as the Comprehensive Plan to reduce those standards. So we adopted these alternative temporary lodging use standards, which if you look at the standards that were previously adopted, it looks like that's what they were trying to do in 2007 and 2008, where they have 60 units per acre, the all temporary lodging is 60 units per acre. So that's what was adopted, is really putting in those alternative temporary lodging use standards, spelling that out, how you have to go through that. That's not a PD. That's just with the development agreement. And we'll go through that later in this presentation. So these are the standards now in these land use categories. So now we're consistent with the county, but we know that what is built in this area, and then some areas up on 133rd and Pelican, we know the land use is not consistent with the zoning or the land use is not consistent with what is built there. And I really like this slide. This really shows what the previous, previous standards were compared to what's being proposed. So the previous standards, those are the standards that were put in place in 2007, '08 that were inconsistent, have been there since then. So we're really trying to capture that as, as well as what's on the ground and taking that into consideration. I know that's a lot of numbers to take in. We also do have this online. So what's on the ground now? Andrew put this, these maps together. This really shows, this one is the units per acre, so the density. In this area is the floor area ratio, so the intensity, which is the air-conditioned square footage versus the lot, that ratio. And this is density, which is all based on the units per acre. So here on the west side currently, let's see. Right here, or previously, it was 60 units per acre, 45 to 75. 45 to 75 was what was allowed. We had to reduce that, as you can see here, down to 50 by right. Or yes, right here, 50 by right. And you can see on this, the 50 is this blue number. So anything that's darker than that exceeds those standards. No, you are not. And this is, so this is the Activity Center. And this is what it looks like on the county. But as you know, and this is the Activity Center area locally as well, the whole entire area. As we know, 133rd looks very different than Pelican, which looks different than Boardwalk. So we're really bringing out these six different character districts that all have their own intensities, densities. And then this will also be reflected in the zoning. So each of these will have their own setbacks, their own heights. We're expecting little to no changes in this transitional area. It's really to reflect what's there currently, fixing those future land use inconsistencies, incompatibilities with what's built there currently. And Pelican, we don't see many changes as well. We are envisioning design guidelines in this area. So the traditional village, the commercial core, Boardwalk. And then John's Pass Resort will look very similar to the setbacks and what's there in the zoning right now. We, we don't anticipate many changes. So on the countywide plan map, this has been changed to Activity Center with the subcategory Neighborhood Center. And other neighborhood centers in Pinellas County is Passa Grill. I know that there's one up in Tarpon Springs, the Palm Harbor Historic District. It's really for those smaller Main Street-style historic districts. And that's very similar to what we have on the ground there in John's Pass. So if this is adopted on the future land use map, this is what it would look like in the Comprehensive Plan and on the future land use map. But then with the Special Area Plan, which is what we're talking about right now, you have those six different character districts. So that's attached to the Comprehensive Plan. But on the map, it would look like one, one area is just this Activity Center. And then on the zoning, we would go through each character district. Like I stated before, each would have their own standards or setbacks or heights. And then we would also carry through the intensities and densities of what is adopted. So going to the zoning, to the zoning map, and I know that's not what we're talking about today or amending today, but that'll be the next step, just so you can see the inconsistencies. We're inconsistent with the, what's built there on the ground as well as what's in the Comprehensive Plan, as well as what's on the countywide plan. But looking at the zoning, it's also, doesn't match the character of what is in this area. So you can see the setbacks. The front yard is none, side yard is 10 feet on one side, reared yard is 25 feet. Height is 34 feet. You can't even get to that because we cannot allow an intensity that would allow for two stories. It's an intensity of .55 FAR. And here's the character district map again. So where we have these asterisks, those are the alternative temporary lodging use standards. And those alternative temporary lodging use standards, that comes from the county. It's something that we can adopt. We've adopted up and down Gulf Boulevard on the east and west side. So C3, C4, and R3. We've adopted those standards. So these are only allowed with an approved development agreement. And it has to follow all the required standards in the countywide rules. That's at a very minimum. And then another thing that's very unusual is that structured parking is counted in that floor area ratio. Typically, it's, it's about like the air-conditioned square footage, the ratio of your lot. But if you go this route with the alternative temporary lodging use standards, you have to count the parking, the structured parking, which is, it's just unusual. But that's in the countywide plan. So that's not something that we can amend even in the future. It's all from the county. And then locally, we have requirements. So it has to go to a Planning Commission meeting, one BOC meeting. There's a mailed notice of 300 feet. Has to be advertised in the newspaper and posted on the property. And so these are the minimum standards, and this comes from the county. So this cannot be changed. This has to be in the development agreement if you're going for that, those alternative temporary lodging use standards. So we have concurrency analysis, the hurricane evacuation plans. So anytime there's a hurricane watch, the alternative temporary, or the temporary lodging hotel would have to be evacuated. There's mobility management, design considerations, operating character districts and restrictions. So those are the very minimum. And on top of that, the board could ask additional requirements. Is this kind of your option of being creative and asking a developer for more than what we can typically ask for when someone comes in for your usual plans or development? And then other local requirements. So we do have the site plan process, which if anything was going through the alternative temporary lodging use standards, it'd most likely be considered a major site plan. So that would also require a neighborhood workshop. And then they have to go to Planning Commission as well. And staff does an extensive review of all the site plan criteria that's in the code. And then, of course, it has to meet all the zoning and local regulations. So just because you're going through a development agreement doesn't mean that you're going, you're rezoning to a PD. So you still have to adhere to all the things that any development has to adhere to. Height, setback, landscape, drainage, all of those things. So where we are right now, we're at this step number four. Oh, the county already established the Activity Center with the subcategory Neighborhood Center on their map. And now it's up to BOC for the final action on both the Activity Center Plan and also changing the future land use map to that area to Activity Center. And then after this, we are required to amend the land development code to establish that zoning that we're talking about. And we've already had a few workshops. We plan on having more workshops and workshops with BOC, workshops with Planning Commission. So you'll be hearing more and more of that. And then we have these slides at the very end, and we might go back and forth with these depending on the questions that we get. But these just show you the previous, so when we were inconsistent with the county, our standards on paper, what our standards were, the current standards, so what we had to lower them to, to be consistent. And where you have this asterisk, that's the alternative temporary lodging use standard. So those are already in our code. So we're already able, people are able to use those alternative temporary lodging use standards. And then the last line here is what's proposed. So on Boardwalk, you can see there's a reduction of residential and temporary lodging to zero. The floor area ratio is 1.5. Commercial core, the floor area ratio, as you can see, we had to reduce that. And then we're proposing a 2. And then these numbers are for the development agreement, alternative temporary lodging use standards. Residential units per acre is not changing. Temporary lodging units, it's really retaining what we used to have, that 60 by right. And then the 72, 100, and the 75, and the 2.2, those standards are anything less than an acre. Anything over an acre would be that 3.0, and the 100. John's Pass Resort looks kind of similar, where it used to go up to 2 by right. So now it's 2 by right. And then these floor area ratio numbers, remember that has to include the parking. That's on both of these. The structured parking. Residential units per acre, not changing. Temporary lodging, you can see the 75, you would have to do the development agreement standards. That's what we used to have by right. standards, that's what we used to have by right. So little changes there. And I would like to also point out that you can reduce the numbers at this hearing. You cannot increase them, but you are welcome to reduce them. Low intensity mixed use. I mentioned that there's inconsistency with the land use and the zoning. The land use should have been changed. When the zoning was changed, that never happened, so there's a huge disconnect there. So that's one of the major reasons why this area is included in the Activity Center, to change that, to correct it. And plus, at close proximity to the village. So that's why you have a lot of different numbers down here. It's really to retain what we have there. Traditional village, very similar. The temporary units per acre used to be 60, we're proposing 45. Floor area ratio, it's really to make sure that all the commercial area is accounted for and that any new development would match those standards, what's there. Or if anybody wants to improve their building, right now they really can't. It's really hard for people to, say, expand on their building or make any improvements. So this kind of gives them that flexibility to do that. Transitional, as you can see, there's not too much change from, originally is 45 to 75 by right. We had to reduce it to 40 and 60 with the alternative temporary lodging use standards. It's proposed at 50 by right, 75 with those alternative temporary lodging use standards. And like I stated before, in the zoning, we really don't see any, much of any changes in the zoning. I think it'll look pretty much the same. It's really to help transition to the John's Pass Village area, as well as really fixing those inconsistencies with the county's plan, with our, and with our comprehensive plan. There's areas that are residential medium, they should have never been residential medium, they should have been changed back in the day. So it's really fixing and cleaning up that area, making sure that what's on the ground is really compatible with the land use. And that is all I have.
Great job, Jenny. I have a couple comments, questions. It was brought up by several residents. Why is the area so large? And in previous presentations, you've described, back in 2001, when the Duane Plan was created, which it was shown as a neighborhood center, and we've actually reduced that footprint to what you see now with the transitional area. And it's not a blank slate. We, as you've pointed out, there are different characteristics of the different areas within the Neighborhood Center. So it's not just a broad brush, so I just want to lower the temperature on that piece of it. So this has been proposed, actually, a much larger area for over 23 years now, to be a Neighborhood Center. I do have a question, though. Back page eight, and that's a great map, I think you really like that. The white areas are what's, previous colored boxes are proposed. So let's just use the orange area for a second as a discussion point. Temporary lodging in the white is 60, where the temporary lodging in the colored area is also 60, but it has the bonus, which is capped out, 75 to 100, as a bonus. If this were not adopted and was still at the white area, 60, am I correct to say that a PD could still be offered or proposed without limitations? So this is actually providing a limitation where previous did not have a limitation as long as a PD and it was approved by the board?
Let me see if I can answer it. And if not, then ask me again. So these are the previous standards that were adopted in '07, '08, when we were not consistent with the county. So currently, our standards in that area, so that's a commercial general for our future land use. So by right, you can only do 40 units per acre. Previously, it was 60 units per acre by right. You didn't have to go through any development agreement standard, you didn't have to go through any public meetings. Someone could come in and say, I want to build a hotel with 60 units per acre, and then based on your land area, that would determine how many units you could get. Now, we had to reduce those standards to be, fall within the countywide plan categories. So now, it's 40 units per acre. But with the alternative temporary lodging use standards, you could go up to 60, seeing that you went through that development agreement process, not PD, just development agreement process. That doesn't say someone can't do the rezone to a PD. That's just saying if you ask for development agreement, you're given a development agreement through Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, then you can go up to that 60 units per acre. Still has to meet all those standards as minimum standards. You don't have to do a PD.
So back here.
So can you, I think the clarification, so like right now with the temporary 60, if somebody were to right now come in and get a PD, what then becomes?
So with a PD, you also have to get a development agreement. So you would imagine if someone's asking for, I want to rezone to plan development, I probably want to get the maximum out of my land, so I'll probably ask for that 60 units per acre right here, 60 units per acre, and just make sure that all those minimum standards are within that development agreement process or contract.
So what, going back to the previous?
This one?
Page, what then is the orange?
So the orange, this is the proposed standards. So 60 units per acre is by right. And then the 75 to 100 is if you go through that development agreement process. You don't have to go through the plan development. You don't have to rezone your property to plan development. You just have to go through that development agreement process with all those minimum standards that was in the presentation. And those numbers are 75, it's less than an acre, 100, if it's an acre or over.
Okay. The original question, if this were not to be passed and someone came in and wanted to develop and wanted to go through the PD, is there a limit?
Yes, there's a limit. The limit would be 60 units per acre if you go through the alternative temporary lodging use standards.
Okay, so it's 40 and 60?
Yeah, 40 and 60 is the current.
Is the current.
Yeah, it just gets a little hard because our standards were inconsistent, we had to lower them. And between that, you know, we've been working through the Activity Center plan, so...
Proposed still meets with the county?
Proposed still, yes, it does.
Proposed is actually less than the county's max standards for the alternative temporary lodging use standards.
Andrew, good, use the microphone closer.
The county's standards would allow for 100 units per acre by right, or with alternative temporary lodging, or alternative temporary lodging standards, 125 units by right, or not by right, or with the alternative temporary lodging use standards. So the, anything we're proposing is less than what the county's maximum is by right or with the alternative temporary lodging use standards.
So what's proposed is 60% of what the county would by right approve?
Yes. But we didn't, we obviously didn't want to adopt those, doesn't match what's down there by right, so that's why we went with that lower standard and then having kind of that bonus with the alternative temporary lodging use standards.
I think it's important to remember, like the existing, like retail and services category is more of a suburban land use category for like big box stores, kind of suburban-style hotels with big surface parking lots, gas stations, garden apartments, stuff that's not really down in John's Pass. Like the closest example, the Walmart and the Holiday Inn Express, those have the retail and service future land use, and those are in City of Seminole. And those don't really look like anything down John's Pass. And that, actually, that hotel there has more rooms than basically any building down, but it's in that category. So, I mean, I think that's kind of, density, intensity is kind of abstract, where you could have something that's high density because it's on a tiny lot, but it might only be 20 units. So that's what I, I mean, it's kind of, these lots are very small, a lot of them are, was it like 45, 110, 10 feet or some, so...
And I think that's one of the key points that needs to be continually pointed out. There's not one, as far as I know, there's not one piece of property there that's an acre.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct, there's not one contiguous property that's over an acre. It's most of the, most of what's down in this area is really what Andrew was saying, like 45.
Overall, it's 27 acres or whatever.
Overall, the entire.
But I'm saying each individual property that could be developed.
Exactly. Most of the properties are quite small. So then whenever you actually calculate the floor area ratio or the units per acre, that's when you get a better idea of what can be built there.
Okay, I'll let someone else speak.
So I just want to bring up a couple of things. At our last meeting, we discussed that this has gone back and forth from Madeira Beach to Forward Pinellas and has been reduced from Forward Pinellas on their advice, or they're telling us what we must do to comply. It went back to Forward Pinellas, the way they wanted us to write it, with us going with lower numbers, and it was voted on. And as far as the county is concerned, this is what they voted for for us, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
The other thing that I wanted to bring up, two things. Number one, one of the things that I like about this is that it gives us much more control over design, where we don't have that now. Currently, now someone could go down there and build a ugly condo that no one would like, it would look nothing like John's Pass, if that's what they chose to do, where with this plan, we at least have the opportunity to have input, not only on the way the buildings look, but if a developer wants to go for the additional lodging, we also have the opportunity to negotiate things for the city, for our infrastructure, whether roads, I mean, anything, roads, parks, whatever the city and the developer would like to compromise together on, and so design, and the FAR, I'm sorry, that was my last thing. And even though the numbers have gone up, because parking is included in the FAR, it does have some dictating on how many rooms you can do, if you're talking specifically hotel, because even though your numbers could be 100, your floor area ratio could limit that based on what you're doing.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to point those things out because they are things that I've asked for clarification on time and again, and I think is important for anyone who has not attended the meetings or been able to watch the meetings to understand, or to just have the knowledge.
Commissioner McGinn?
Good job, by the way. Excellent job, team. I'm going to move this over here. The ordinance 2023-01, John's Pass Village Activity Center Plan, with a subplan of the Neighborhood Center. This comes in compliance with the current county commission. Basically, it was kind of like a meat-in-the-middle type of thing, I believe, where we all have agreed before, right? One resident, and thank you for everyone that came up and spoke and gave their opinions at the podium. I know it's hard sometimes to do that, but I appreciated everyone's opinion. One concern that everyone agreed with having this meeting at 2:00, 2:00 PM, which is a lot of people's work time. One resident brought up a concern that a lot of people couldn't make it to this very important meeting because they had to work. I would have liked to hear more voices from the store owners in John's Pass and from also the property owners. I know we've been going back and forth, we've had a lot of meetings. My main concern was how many people actually knew this, how many residents knew this meeting was going to be held at 2 instead of after work at 6. Basically, the most important part of today and the ordinance 2023-01. The purpose of the Activity Center Plan, to establish the standards and means to preserve and rebuild the existing character of John's Pass Village. Any case of a disaster like one resident brought up, thank goodness that the sheriff was on duty that night and we stopped the fire. And it's important to really understand that we need the existing character of John's Pass. It's a very important tourist destination, and it brings in a lot of people to our area. And I would like to see it stay the same as long as I'm in commission and as a resident. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Taglerini?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address the concern that a couple of you made about the 2:00 meeting. I don't want that to go, that blame to go to the city, that's entirely my fault. When we set up our calendar earlier this year, I knew that I would have work conflicts. I think we rescheduled three, maybe two. I adjusted my schedule as much as possible, but this day I knew I wouldn't be able to, and the board was kind enough to approve that, and it was put in the calendar. So it wasn't a surprise change, and I apologize, but I just didn't want anybody blaming the city. That's entirely because of me and my colleagues, I appreciate you allowing me to be here for this important vote. I did vote yes on this, on the first hearing. Since then, I've received a lot of calls, a lot of emails, and so I've tried to make myself as informed as possible regarding this subject. And although future land use planning is certainly not my area of expertise, I feel like I've got a better grasp of it than I did before. I've spoken to, over this whole period of a year or so, I've spoken to Linda Fisher from Forward Pinellas, our city manager, Mr. Gomez, our very patient community development director and staff. I've spoken to Bill Karnes to see how he feels about it. I want to, I feel like it's important to hear what everybody has to say about this. I even spoke to a retired city manager from St. Petersburg Beach. I just ran into him at a party and I asked him, hey, what do you think of this? And importantly, I've listened to residents of Madeira Beach. And I've always tried to take the 30,000-foot view while still wading through the specific details of this plan. As it's been stated a couple times, the first page of the recent plan gives the reasons for this ordinance. It protects the village, allows for compatible redevelopment, consistency with the countywide plan. That's super important. I think people underestimate how important that is. And finally, being proactive instead of reactive. I believe at its core, this plan will address all of those issues. At its core, this plan does not significantly, significantly increase densification in the village, and in fact, it decreases density in some areas. With that said, I will support and vote yes. With that said, I will support and vote yes for this ordinance with two minor amendments. This plan includes bonus increases in units per acre, which property owners and developers can be awarded through the process of development agreements. I, I well understand the importance of attracting and encouraging development, developers, but this absolutely must be balanced with the opinions and quality of life of our residents. I went to two of the meetings, the town meetings. One of the meetings, it was asked what the highest units per acre density currently was in existing structures in the John's Pass Village, Village Zone. From my notes, I read that it was stated that the maximum is only one property at 70 units per acre. If we allow the potential bonus of 100 units per acre, this is an increased density of 43%. But that's only for that property. We have to assume that if only one property is at 70 units per acre, that all the rest are lower than that. If a property is only at a units per acre of 65, that's an increase of 55%, 54%. If a property is currently, units per acre at 50, this means that the potential increase in density is 100%. They will double their intensity, density. If a property is currently at 30 units per acre, and I believe there are some, the buy right increase alone will allow them a 100% increase in units per acre. With the bonus that I'm suggesting of 75 units per acre, the increase will be 150%. There's still plenty of room for increase in density. It's not lost on me, the irony that we're talking about increases in density in the middle of tourist season, when getting off the island, which usually takes two minutes, can sometimes take 20 minutes, and turning left on Gulf Boulevard is nearly impossible. I accept that. I knew what I was getting into. But I preface all this, all of that to say that I will support this ordinance. I will vote yes, but only if the bonus maximums at the Commercial Core and John's Pass Resort Character District are lowered to 75. This means that with a development agreement, a property owner or a developer has the potential to increase the buy right allowed density by 25%. Properties which are currently below the buy right UPA can still increase their UPA by an even larger percentage. In addition, the one property that is already at 70, this not only brings the property in compliance, but allows the potential to increase by 7%, which allows the cost of inflated, inflated materials. I've heard that in a good compromise, nobody walks away happy. Perhaps this is a perfect compromise. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have another question, then.
Please.
So the, my only concern with that is, in my understanding, the temporary, and you're only speaking specifically to the Commercial Core area.
No, Commercial Core and John's Pass Resort, which crosses the street...
Okay, so when...
Which I think is where the 70, the one building that's at 70 is.
Correct.
San John's Pass Resort.
Yeah.
But I think where the difference comes in this plan that the county has negotiated with us is that because the FAR is so much higher, when you reduce the number of temporary lodging and then you have to increase the floor area ratio, I don't know that that's a balance for over an acre, because that 100 is for over an acre, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So if someone has one point, just say they buy an acre and a quarter down there. I don't know. Somebody could, maybe. And they would be capped at 75.
If, if it's adopted at 75...
If it's adopted at 75, but they might not necessarily be able to have the... That was one of the questions when I asked about showing a visual of what an acre looks like with the, with the parking that would be required, the floor area ratio to at 100, capping at 100, so that everyone could understand what that looks like. Because I understand what you're saying, David. But I guess that, based off all the information that's been given to us from our planning department, everything that's come from Forward Pinellas, I don't see the 100 as being excessive because it's not just handing 100 to someone. If they get 100 units per acre, they also have to meet the 3.0 FAR, right? So there's a, I believe, a balanced give and take. They're getting more units, but their floor area ratio is included, and that has to include all their parking.
Understood.
So I, that's where I thought, now, if floor area ratio did include parking, I would go, okay, well, that makes, that could make good sense. But because a developer, in this case, that is what it would be, if they're going to build something, they're going to have to give up probably two, at least two, maybe three floors of parking, because they're going to have to have first floor retail, then two floors of parking, and then they could have a hotel that I believe we were, nothing would get higher approval than what is existing down there.
Yeah, I think it was, came out to around five, six stories.
Yeah.
It depends on the setbacks and a lot of other things.
Right, and all that, which is a whole nother thing. When we come back and start talking zoning and setting all of those parameters for setbacks and all of that, I think that's really where, or I don't think it, in my opinion, that's where we're really going to have the opportunity to structure things more. This is just naming it a center. This is just saying, this is what you can get if you're willing to jump through every hoop that the commission and the planning commission and the neighborhood is willing to agree with. Once we start looking at the zoning requirements, I think is where the real decision-making comes in.
I understand, I understand that whole development agreement. Currently, by right, somebody who owns more than one acre, and you can, you can combine properties.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
You can, they already can do 65. I'm offering 10 more, but potential for 10 more. I, I, I will not agree to 100.
I have an, an idea of, or two ideas for a compromise. One option would be to split the difference and just do an average, add the 75 plus 100, and then do that, whatever the average is of that is the max. Or cap it at 75, but if you have over an acre of land, allow up to the 3 FAR to retain the structured, structured parking and ground floor retail that, that's desired down there.
What's the average? Did you do that, Matt?
I'd have, I'd have to, have to do that.
I think I would challenge any developer to have first floor retail plus parking plus limited to, what, 35 feet? Commercial Core?
Depends on what is written into the zoning.
What is it?
So right now, I think it's...
35 feet, I believe.
34?
But the parking structure exceeds that, that's a...
I think the parking structure is like 61 feet.
It's about that, I'd say. I think it's six floors.
So what would the, what would be the height of a temporary lodging maximum? And where does that height start from?
I mean, that would be dealt with in the zoning, but...
Yeah, the zoning, which will come after. So currently, there, Marcy's looking it up. It's, no C1. So remember, we will be rewriting the zoning. That's the next step of this whole process. Currently, the height is 34 feet, and that's measured at design flood elevation, which is typically like your second floor.
So basically, right now, it's 30, 34, 35 feet?
34.
Above the first grade?
Yes, above the first floor.
Above the retail?
Yes.
Andrew, did you come up with a...
It's 87.5 if you have 175 and then divide by two.
And the 75 right here, we cannot exceed that number, that 75, less than an acre. So if you did decide to do the average, the 87, is that what you said? It would be 75, and then if you had an acre or more, it'd be 87.
Could we lower the...
And here, too.
Could we commer, lower the Commercial Core to 87, but leave John's Pass Resort at 75?
That's, that's an option, too.
That's, that's up to you.
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of that. I would vote yes with those figures.
I, I'm more concerned about the, you know, what, what we're going to get into with the zoning, and we still have to make those votes. You know, the far, you know, what is it going to look like? Is it going to, is it going to maintain the character? I mean, we're in a tourist area. It was brought up by one of our residents, which was, was great, that there's so much dense, much more density here in Madeira Beach and in Pinellas County than other places, but of course it is. This is a resort area. Yeah, it is, you know, likes to be sold as the fishing village, but it is a resort area. We have over 3 million visitors come here. And if they're not, if they're not here, they're going to be traveling from other, from St. Pete, they're going to be traveling from Treasure Island, from Reddington Beach, from, from Clearwater. So I don't have a problem with the 100. I don't have a problem with it at all. As long as we have control over what that structure looks like, it has the first floor commercial. It's of limited height. That's, I'm more concerned about the buildings, so I don't have a problem with the 100 one bit. If a, if a, if a developer can get creative and make that work, and there's a few extra people that actually walk here versus have to travel in by car on a daily basis, yeah, I'm all about the parking revenue, don't get me wrong. But, you know, that's one of the, that's one of the big red flags that everyone's concerned about is the, is the, the traffic. Well, if they're here, they can spend a week and not be in a car. They can get an Uber from the, from the airport. You know, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. It has to be approved. I don't want to take that away from future, future boards and future conversations with residents, what, anything that has to be approved and reviewed. I don't know. I don't have a problem with 100. We've been through this for, heck, we were going through this when, when we were in the planning commission. And this is, I think this is, we've, I think we've compromised several times. I would, I would like to vote for it just the way it is, and if we can get four votes to do that, that's what I'd like.
I agree. I think we've compromised a lot to get to this number. It was far greater, and there was a lot of compromise to get to here, and I agree with you, Vice Mayor. The 100 might sound like a lot, but it gives the city a lot to work with also when dealing with the developer. And I don't think it's a lot when you're thinking about all of the requirements that are attached to it.
Once again, just to be clear, I, I will, I will not approve at 100. I will approve 87 for the Commercial Core and 75 for John's Pass Resort. Otherwise, I'll be a no vote.
And both of those are very reasonable numbers, and it, and it's, it's better to compromise and, because it'd be worse to lose this all, because then no one's protected and we don't really have as much control over what actually gets built down there. Or, and people can even do, because with the way our non-conforming buildings and use, part of our code works, is if, if you have something that you, you can't, you can basically just do basic maintenance on, and that's it, you can't, you can't really do any improvements. So I, it'd be better to reduce the density and pass it with, with the necessary votes than to lose everything and then we're stuck with nothing fixed.
Just want to reiterate, I've received input from informed sources that no bonuses at all would still solve the problems that we see. And many residents would just prefer, prefer I vote no altogether. All I'm asking is for an amendment for two areas.
Any other...
That said, I move that we amend the ordinance to lower the bonus in the Commercial Core from 100 to 87, and the John's Pass Resort from 100 to 75.
Do we have an opportunity to, to find out if we have the votes to pass it as, as written?
No, I don't... There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
You need to act upon the motion on the floor if it's seconded.
Do we have a second? Motion dies?
No, I had, can I clarify a question on the, on your motion? Please, would you read it again? I'm sorry.
I move that we amend ordinance 2024-01. Is that the right, I think that's the right number?
2023.
Sorry. 2023-01, to lower the bonus maximum in the Commercial Core from 100 to 87, which was the average that Andrew got for us, and the John's Pass Resort from 100 to 75.
So that would mean that on the John's Pass Resort, regardless if it was an acre, 75 is the most they could have?
Is that right?
Correct, because isn't that 75, 100, less than an acre and over an acre?
Exactly, 75 would be the maximum.
Be 75 maximum?
And currently, there's one there at 70, so it's still an increase.
Yes. And then also, you're not touching the FAR. This is only the units per acre. Okay.
But on the, so the 87 would still have to be a 3.0 FAR?
I'm not changing that.
Want to adjust that accordingly? Can we adjust that accordingly?
Or it can be the 3.0.
Well, that's what I mean. So currently, the way it's written is 75, 100, 2.2 to 3.0. So if we're going to adjust the 100 to 87, I would want to lower that 3.0.
It would still have to include the parking, structured parking, so that's...
I don't, I don't know that I know that I...
I didn't want to impact the F, the floor area ratio.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
If we don't approve this, it dies here today. It has to go back to the county.
And we have to go back to the county, and we would have to ask to re-categorize it what it used to be.
I will second the motion.
City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
I don't understand something. If this motion doesn't carry, will other motions be possible?
So the answer is no? It would fail?
We couldn't, we couldn't offer any other motions on this subject. Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Well, I have an issue with this. The problem here is...
Mayor, point of order?
We just need to vote.
Yeah, we just need to vote yes or no. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Rostick?
No.
The motion carried four to one.
Okay, next stop is, let's see. We did the flume together with this, or is the flume something separate?
That was only ordinance 2023-01.
Okay, so we're 2023-02, then?
Yes, Mayor, I need to read that. We need to open the public hearing and then vote on that. You've already had your presentation. Okay. All right. Thank you. So ordinance 2023-02, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map designation of the city's comprehensive plan for commercial, general, recreation, open space, residential medium, residential office, retail, and resort facilities medium to Activity Center for the area set forth in the accompanying legal description in Exhibit A, attached here, too, and hereby made a part of this ordinance, providing for future revitalization and development within the Activity Center category to be consistent with and pursuant to the procedures, guidelines, and standards of the John's Pass Village Activity Center Plan as adopted by ordinance 2023-01. and as such, plan may be implemented and administered through the adoption of a John's Pass Village Activity Center zoning districts, providing for transmittal to, in consideration by Ford, Pinellas, and the countywide planning authority for a corresponding amendment of the countywide future land use map to the countywide plan category of activity center, neighborhood center, providing for transmittal to the Florida State Department of Economic Opportunity for their review and comment, providing for the filing of this amendment to the city future land use map in the office of the city clerk, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two by title only.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this first? Please come up. We'd love to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Christina Ponte, North Bay Shore. Assuming that I understand what this is, which is the ability to apply what you just voted on. Is that correct? No, maybe. I'll, I'll state my comment regardless. I'm disappointed that my question was not answered. And the question was, which of the buildings could not currently be rebuilt? And that has not been answered. And that was emailed, and that was asked. And in none of the documents, none of the January sessions, none of the board of commission, I, I listened to Anne Marie respond to the presentation at the last commission meeting. I watched the videos. You all have not answered the questions that are being asked, which is, which could not be rebuilt? From what I've done, it seems as though the one, there are about four properties, including Caddies, that could currently not be rebuilt, rebuilt. Setbacks, great. Everything, that is minor compared to the capacity that we are allowing. Yes, I am not an expert at building and zoning, but what I can see pretty clearly is that most of those in the John's Pass Resort area currently are at thirty to forty units. You're allowing by right now sixty. So you're doubling. So if somebody purchases multiple lots, although they are small currently and probably less expensive than Clearwater and other cities, they could in fact build and develop double what is currently there on most of this area. So with that, I, I do not feel that that was answered or addressed in the comments. And again, it seems as though you are allowing, and I could be wrong. I haven't sat for years, although I have sat on other boards for years. I understand the homework that's been done, but the question was not answered, and it seems as though you are allowing for up to double what is currently there. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but there is a thirty to forty. If you look at their map, if I could have them pull up that heat map graphic, you can see the properties which are in non-conformance, and it does not appear to be many. So that means should a fire have taken those out, they should be able to rebuild what is currently there, except for those that are not conforming. Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, we'll close public comment on this. Commissioners?
Just to be clear, we're on twenty twenty-three oh two.
Correct.
Correct. And this is, uh.
Amending the flume to add John's Pass Village.
John's Pass Village as we just approved it. With our amendments.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I move we pass ordinance twenty twenty-three oh two, amending FLUM to add John's Pass Village Activity Center.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Well, thank you kindly. City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
No.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
The motion carried four to one.
All right, thank you. All right, next up then is ordinance twenty twenty-four oh three, an ordinance adopting code provision regarding parking meter overtime, et cetera. I think this is city manager?
Mr. Trask will read the ordinance by title.
Mayor Commissioners, this is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, creating section sixty-six dash seventy to provide duties of vehicle operators to actuate parking meters and amending section sixty-six dash seventy-two to provide for additional limitations on parking in city parking lots and beach access easements in chapter sixty-six, traffic and vehicles of the code of ordinances, providing for conflict, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three by title only. There have been no changes since the first reading.
And Mayor Commissioners, as we mentioned when, at the first reading of the ordinance, this is simply to clarify and to add language on the, our parking processes, making it clear, the language when a violation is issued for not paying to park, as well as defining in our code improper parking or when somebody parks, for example, on a sidewalk or blocking a fire hydrant.
Okay, thank you. First up is public comment. Please come up. We'd love to hear what you have to say.
Commissioners, Tom Edwards, District One. I suggest that there's some additions, clarifications that you could do with this ordinance. For instance, in number three there, it talks about unlawful for any person to permit to park there for more than two hours before they can get another ticket. This is a conflict with the one that you already have is sixty-six dash sixty-six, which is, says one hour period. So you need to correct the conflict that you have between the two ordinances. Whether you do one hour or two hours, you need to make that decision. I, I don't know if Mr. Trask can take a look at that, that there is a conflict?
I don't have the code with me. I can't do it. So if there is a conflict, we, we can correct it by another ordinance, adding an additional code section.
Okay.
Then there's also a part about, uh, down in sixty-six seventy-two, number one, all vehicles must park within the designated meter spaces. We used to have a designated length that a maximum-sized vehicle could park there. We've had tractor trailers, the tractor part, come and park in those spaces that are twenty-eight feet long. We used to have a, a specific number. Right now, the average length of cars are fifteen feet. The largest vehicle out there is a car, is a Chevy Suburban, which is nineteen feet. And then the only truck that would be larger is a super duty max truck with an extra-long length bed, which would be twenty-two feet. For law enforcement purposes, it would be better for you to put a specific length that could occupy parking space. Right now, the way it reads, is it just gotta be within the length of the line, or can it extend past that? You really should put a number in there, because law enforcement wants to see a number. Then there's on, um, on part of the other parts where it talks about parking, some of, some of what's put in there is from state statute, which is the way it should be. For instance, parking within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant. Law enforcement likes to see specificity. So in number six, it says parking too close to an intersection obstructing visibility for other drivers is prohibited. It doesn't say anything. You should put it like at thirty feet. The state statute for parking talks about that, within thirty feet upon approach of any flashing signal, stop sign, or traffic control device located on the side of the roadway. So you can't park within thirty feet of a stop sign. So if you're talking about visibility, you should put a specific length in there that the vehicle would have to be from the apex of that corner back. And because what, what happens is, if you have the vehicle too close, then cars have to go around it and come back into their lane of traffic in order to make a turn. For safety reasons, you should be more specific with the distances. And then finally, down in sixteen and eighteen, we have an ordinance that talks about parking, um, from six AM to midnight, and no parking from midnight to six, unless it's posted. We had it specifically that going out to the beach accesses, the, the parking that's right next to the beach accesses and to residences, that there was no parking during that time period. I'm suggesting to change the time from eleven PM to seven AM, that you can't park there, but signs need to be erected. Sheriff's Office has come out there and told me we can't write tickets because there's no sign there that says that you can't park on those parking spaces during that time period. There used to be years ago, but we don't have it in our current signs out there. So.
Thank you for the constructive comments.
The Sheriff's Office doesn't write parking tickets on midnight shifts or evening shifts. I don't think we've had any that, that have come in. But, uh, you know, we could encourage them if we get this tightened up a little bit. Thank you.
No, thank you. Commissioners, or is there any other public comment first? Okay, we'll close public comment on this then. Commissioners?
Can we postpone the vote on this and have the, uh, parking jurisdiction, uh, look into some of Tom's comments?
We, we have. The, the ordinance is correct. It's just language that we don't, it's to clarify language. So we can't take it every hour. That's in another section. If you read the section that was quoted, it is unlawful for any person to park, to, for, excuse me, to permit a vehicle to remain in any parking space for more than two hours. You, so in other words, you can get a ticket every hour. You must remove it after two hours if you're ticketed. That's still, we want the vehicle to move away. That's why this is in here.
Understandable, but what about some of the other comments?
I think they were all correct on here as well. We're gonna keep twelve to, twelve PM to six AM has been the time that the lots are not, we're not enforcing. We have never had, to my knowledge, parking enforcement during that time, we can, but we never, we just never have. It hasn't been an issue that has been communicated, except at John's Pass Park parking lot, where we had vandalism occurring and other things, and we had to close that lot between noon and six AM. And then I must have had fifty people who like to go fish, who said, hey, open it up. I can't walk six hundred feet north with all my equipment.
But the, uh, Mr. Edwards brings up two other valid points. How about the length of the vehicle?
That's also in a different section, and it is posted out on the lots that you cannot park anything longer than eighteen feet, and we do ticket for that.
But shouldn't it be in this one document?
I think it is already in another section of the code.
Okay, and then how about getting near, uh, near an intersection where you're blocking a view? Should there be a certain amount of feet?
So the reason we did not is because that's speci- that's more geared for neighborhoods. It, it just gets to be too complicated, I think, to put an actual distance. I mean, we're gonna go out and measure, we can, but that's only an issue in certain neighborhoods. And it's really because people's landscaping obstructs your view, so.
But we're talking about vehicular obstruction of view. The issue that you could potentially have with this is, if we don't put a number on it, it's subjective. If you got somebody in a low vehicle that can't see around an, an excellent, whatever, versus, and the police come and was like, well, I can see around it. So then it's a subjective issue where if you put a number to it.
We'd have to put a number on curves as well, which we could. I mean, if you want a number, we'd have to, because there's also a section about you can't park on a curve where you're obstructing the view. How do you, do you put a distance for curve as well? So we can. We would have to add a distance to everything, and we can, can do that. That's still a very minor component, because the majority of our parking violations are in the metered, or for, for folks that don't pay to park or park improperly in one of the metered lots.
Yeah.
We, we, even, we were not enforcing for neighborhoods until a little over a year ago. And that's why we're making a lot of these changes, because we had way too many residents and property owners that just felt like parking wherever they felt, even blocking driveways, blocking mailboxes, blocking, so, but we, if that's your direct, we can go ahead and add distances for all of them.
Well, he, uh, Mr. Edwards, I'm sorry, brings up a valid point with fifteen foot with the fire hydrant. Just make it fifteen foot across the board. I mean, does, does that make sense? What do you think?
Mayor, do we, do we need, do we need to get this one done? And then put on our workshop neighborhood parking procedures? And then take many of, some of Mr. Edwards' considerations and, and then have another, another ordinance?
If that's, would that?
We, we need to get this ordinance adopted today.
That's, that's why I'm saying, get this, getting this one done.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And then we'll revisit things.
That's, I think, because I, I agree, and living in a neighborhood, I understand a lot of what he says.
He brings up very valid points.
I'd like to, but I'd like to have a separate discussion for this. We already voted once on this. Let's get this one done.
I agree.
All right. Do we have a motion then?
I move that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three revising parking limitations, adding parking meters.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I just make, it was twenty twenty-four oh three. I, I just gotta get the motion right.
Sorry, I need new glasses.
Twenty twenty-four dash oh three.
Twenty twenty-four dash oh three.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Next up, unfinished business. Do we have any? All right, that sounds good. Next up is contracts and agreements. First up is the Code Enforcement Satellite Office.
As we, Mr. DeSantis came, our billing official discussed at the workshop, we issued a RFP, Request for Proposal, for complete the build-out of the area underneath essentially the stairs at City Hall. And we received three proposals. This, we are recommending for the commission to approve, entering into an agreement with Mali Contracting Corporation, who is the lowest, most responsive bidder for this project. Our budget was estimated at two hundred and sixty thousand. With the, the total cost should be close to that. The bid amount was just under two hundred and twenty thousand at two hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-four. We would then subsequently bring back, or excuse me, recommend that we negotiate an agreement with Mali Contracting Corporation.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this first? All right, no public comment. Commissioners? The only question I have is, have we researched DBPR to make sure that we're not hiring any potential issues? All right, I got a thumbs up from Holden. Thank you. All right, other commissioners? Vice Mayor?
No, I think we've gone over this.
All right, well then, do we have a motion?
I move we give permission to negotiate an agreement with Mali Contracting Corp. To construct the Code Enforcement Satellite Office base.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Well, thank you. City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up, under contracts, is item B, approve agreement with Network People for security-focused information technology to support and consulting services.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an item, it was presented several months ago when we did issue an RFP in the summer. We've spent some time reviewing what we, what our IT infrastructure, what the needs were, et cetera. We've discussed with Network People what that agreement would yield, what to include. There's quite a bit of detail in your packet as to what we are looking for. We, this is the final, or the proposed final product before you to approve a five-year agreement with Network People, not to, well, for the first year, just under one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Our costs have averaged about two hundred thousand dollars for the last decade, so we really haven't had a significant increase. Of course, technology fluctuates, as you're aware, the cost of the equipment. About what has not fluctuated has been the services cost, but as your technology has improved, the need for fewer staffing has sort of been a little bit of the, of, a little bit of the norm, except in the security area or, or cybersecurity, as the term goes. However, Network People utilizing their services and the volume of the experts and the diversity that they offer in terms of the, both the network and the software support is really, has been the most efficient for us. I know in the past, we have discussed whether hiring our own personnel, as I've shared. I think the cost, just in the salaries alone, realistically, even just to have two people would exceed this amount. would exceed this amount if they were hired full-time. It would be difficult to find somebody who has the level of, of expertise and the staffing for a full-time job that would likely be at a total salary with benefits at probably under $130,000 just for one. So, we've, that's why this city, based on our size, and for the changes that continue to occur in techn, in information technology, why we've gone this route. We issued the RFP, had five replies to it. And again, as I shared in the past, we believe Networks, Network People is the most responsive and are able to do as good of a job, will continue hopefully to do as good of a job as they have. Representatives from Network People are here in the audience, Nate Freeman and, I'm sorry, Nate Freeman and Hunt Brand are here. I was gonna confuse your last name, sorry. If you have any questions directly of Network People. Again, it's a five-year contract. It does allow for a 60-days advance notice to terminate. We do not have a, anything after the five years, but we would likely issue, my suggestion, another RFQ as we approach the fifth year, just to, again, determine what's happening with the market conditions.
All right. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, no public comment. Commissioners?
Robin, I'm assuming since this is who you chose, you and the city staff are happy with their performance?
Yes.
And what they do for you?
Yes, very much so.
I think that is very important.
I, I will, to add to that, we have gone through, what would be the right term? I think they know the term better than I. We are using different software in different departments for different functions. The Clerk's Office, Building Department, and we're kind of expanding on some of that software for other applications. We're likely, for another one, we're going to switch from, and I, I can't remember the name of the, the vendor, but for our reporting, any issues that a resident, anybody may see out there, and I can't remember the name of the, maybe GoGov, I think is the vendor, the software, to a different software. And Network People has been extremely, extremely supportive in working with those new vendors to do whatever needs to be transferred, what needs to be adjusted, how to get it up and running with minimal disruption to operations. We really, our mission critical really is our fire department. And, but again, fire being how it is, we don't even manage that software directly for any calls that come in. I mean, that's through the county, through 911. But obviously, we have to have our architecture, infrastructure working properly, that Network People provides that support. What I'm alluding is if we had something that did not work, again, it's not overly mission, mission critical. In other words, we don't have water treatment plants, we don't directly manage our policing, we don't deal with dispatch, so, so we don't have the mission critical things that larger cities may have. But I believe if we did, and we, Network People would be very, very, more than capable to manage and be able to respond. They are literally just up the street in, you're in unincorporated Clearwater, I think, where the main office is located, but they are very, we have a weekly catch-up meeting for any issues that any users in the city have experienced, and then typically I meet with, with Hunt or with Nate or both, at least quarterly. Actually, I think we've been meeting every other month and monthly to get a, finalize the agreement, but they are very, very available. So, we've been very content and would like to continue with Network People.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Network People.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you kindly. City Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is RFQ 23-12 Planning Services to Create and Implement a New City Master Plan.
And Mayor Commissioners, I think I'm gonna defer over to Jenny Roan, Community Development Director, but just to give a quick overview, and I think Jenny provided some at the last meeting, this is the, as was brought up earlier, the, the city's previous master plan, the Dewani Plan from now over 20 years ago. This process that we've been discussing for nearly a year, we're at that point where we're ready to proceed and with, again, we issued an RFQ for this, and we are ready to go to that next step. But it is to see where we are, and where are we going, and what will the city look like over the next five, 10, 20, 30 years? And that's looking at our vision, but creating a master plan that will guide us over the next year. I, I was gonna say during the, the John's Pass, this city, to, to our knowledge currently, has never had a plan to create a hotel zone. I've been asked multiple times that you're creating a hotel zone. Said, I'm not aware of that. I believe there was an article in 2018 or 19 where there was a discussion about a hotel possibly going into John's Pass Village, but regardless of what has happened, this master plan, like the Dewani Address, will guide us and lead us into the future as to, do we wanna put a hotel zone? I believe the answer is no. And I'm not proposing that, or, or even supporting that, but we wanna retain the character of the neighborhoods that we have, and certainly the character of the commercial districts that we have. And where we were both a fishing village and a big tourist attraction, we are a, I believe, and I, and please correct me, we are a smaller fishing village than I believe, in terms of the number of fisher people, but we have become a much larger tourist destination. It was not mentioned, but our population has declined. There were more people living in Madeira Beach in 1960 than in 2020. And that's what the census has recorded every 10 years. So, we're, the 2020, we had 3,895 residents. I believe in 1960, we were close to 4,400. So, very small, but, so, I'll turn it over to Jenny and see where we are going.
Okay. I think Robin did a good job of just an overview. We also have Hannah Schaefer here, audience, with Kim Lee Horn, if you have any questions. Just to kinda go over the last workshop, we had three applicants. Kim Lee Horn ranked top by far, so, staff is recommending going forward with a master plan with Kim Lee Horn. We just need direction from the board to move forward.
Okay, first, is there any public comment on this? No public comment. Commissioners?
I, for one, am very excited to get this started. You can't, you can't accomplish a goal without having a plan. And it's been 23 years, and Kim Lee Horn, as far as I know, you know, more than qualified, have more than enough experience, and I look forward to the process.
I second that.
Okay, if we have no ques, do we have any questions from the Commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I move we recommend proceeding with Kim, Kim Lee Horn for RFQ 23-12.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you kindly. City Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the ADA bus purchase.
Mayor and Commission, as Mr. Hatch, our Recreation Director, discussed at the workshop, we are requesting approval to proceed with the purchase of the Americans with Disabilities bus. We are utilizing the, it's a 2023 Starcraft All-Star XL. We are requesting to proceed to purchase. The bus will be utilized primarily, well, for a variety of different activities and outings. I think the, probably the one that uses it the most is our Madeira Beach Social Club for different, almost weekly types of outings, definitely at least monthly. The new bus will have 30 seats, two wheelchairs, over a total of 36 passengers. The one that we currently utilize has 21 seat, or has the ability to seat 21 passengers. We budgeted $200,000 for this in the fiscal 2024 budget. The current one that is a 2017 will be traded in at a value currently, or estimated value of $34,350. So, the total contract price, including the trade-in, will be $184,342. We, I spoke with Mr. Hatch, and also Mr. McColsky's here with Recreation for any other specific questions, but we researched, and I think I, I had a reply to Vice Mayor Kerr regarding grants. We're, we're looking, and we're constantly looking what we can utilize in grants and also appropriate, state appropriations, for example. Some grants are much more, much more complex and much more competitive than others. For transportation, super, super competitive, most transportation-type grants, unless you find something specific, hey, here's a grant to purchase, this are pretty much relegated to transit authorities, to, so, to established ones that provide public transportation versus your individual, even as a government. So, we're still searching. We have not located one specifically that we could apply for that would lower this, of course, but we still can, even after this is approved, and after we make the purchase, you can still, so we will continue to do that. I had mentioned in my reply, the federal transit kind of repository of hundreds and hundreds of grants. They were all specific to a trans, somebody like PSTA could use them to build whatever, and I think they did use that to purchase Sunrunner, for example. So, that was a millions of dollars grant. I wish there was one, hey, here's $50,000 or $100,000 to buy your bus. We just want, there were quite a few for school buses, but they go directly to your school district. It's, it would be great if there was somewhere that you're providing a service, and so you need one of this type, of this type of bus, or, we actually have this type of, an ADA bus, we have a school bus, but we're not, that's not our main fleet, and that's not what we do. We utilize them to complement services that we provide. So, because we're not a main provider, it's tough to, but we'll, we'll continue kind of researching and going through. Even the League of Cities was like, yep, you, you'd be better off if you bought a fleet of buses. Well, we don't need a fleet, you know, and define a fleet, is it five, 10, 15, or 20? Well, usually, it's a minimum of, of 10, you know, school buses, or 10 of any, well, yeah, we're not looking to buy 10 of any quantity at this point. Even looking for one for, we just purchased the Kubota for parking. Even for that, you know, a lot of them are based on multiple, you purchase, you're starting a fleet. So, I was frustrated kind of searching and searching. I think Jay mentioned similar. Even looking through the, the National Recreation and Parks Association, and the Florida Recreation and Parks Association, nothing specific, but if anybody were to find any, please, you know, direct us, guide us to that, and we will certainly make that application. We did find quite, some very good opportunities, for example, for docks. So, Marina work is, we're moving forward, we'll bring that at a, at a future workshop, but just to give you an idea, and for roads and streets. Not so much for undergrounding, but there, there is resiliency money that the federal government has made available. And as we comb through the, the state budget, there are grants in there as well for resiliency that can be for future undergrounding of utilities.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I just wanted to say to Robin, thank you for all the efforts in trying to find the grants.
We'll keep on it. We're not, not gonna give up.
Apparently, it's not, not futile if you're finding more, you know, for the docks, and because we're, have the dock work coming up, so, save some money there. It'll help pay for the, pay for it all, so, I'm sure the residents appreciate all that as well.
All right. Do we have a motion? Or, do you have any questions?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the ADA bus.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
City Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
Motion carry five to zero.
All right. Next up was an added item, easement agreement. I think the city attorney's got that one.
Thank you. I'd like to give you some background on this. On March 6, 2017, the city entered into a development agreement with Madeira Beach Town Center LLC to develop approximately 6.6 acres within the Town Center Special Area Plan. Development agreement contemplated that the development of the project would be completed in phases. The development agreement also contemplated that each phase would be established by, as a separate parcel and conveyed to a successor entity. One of those parcels is currently owned by Condo A Company LLC. That parcel is almost complete, and the developer will be recording a declaration of condominium next week and start closing on sale soon, soon after. As part of the development agreement, developer, developer is obligated to provide the city a public-use pedestrian access easement for a 10, 10-foot-wide sidewalk in front of condominium A, condominium B, the Marina, and the Dockmaster Building. Today, you have in front of you the easement agreement that grants to the city that 10-foot sidewalk easement in front of condominium A. Condom B easement has already been recorded some time ago. The sketch and legal description that was attached to the easement was confirmed by the city's consultant engineer, and our real estate attorney at our office and myself have reviewed the easement itself, and frankly, have modified it from the original version that was provided to us a number of weeks ago. The form is, of the easement is now acceptable. I'm asking that the Board of Commissioners approve the easement and accept the sidewalk easement for future use of city residents and visitors. I would just let you know that even though you're receiving this easement, you're not responsible for maintaining it. The property owner is responsible for maintaining it, which is another thing that was added in the development agreement when it was drafted seven years ago. So, you're getting a sidewalk without the obligation of maintaining a sidewalk.
Just one question. Are all of the easements the same? We don't have a 10, then a 15, and all the way down, it's 10-foot?
It's 10-foot all the way down on 150th. The...
It changes on the Madeira Way, though, obviously.
Well, it's, it's not part of Madeira, Madeira Way, because it only goes from condo B up towards the, to the bridge.
Oh, that, okay, that way. I got you.
So, in addition to that, you may be asking, well, what about the Dockmaster Building easement and the Marina easement? That's not required until they actually complete the construction of those facilities. So, I've already contacted the, the Condo A Attorney, and he's, he has basically taken the position that, well, those aren't built yet, therefore, we don't have to provide you with the easement, and furthermore, they're not owned by us anyhow, they're owned by somebody else. So, Mr. Bowden, I think, is, is the owner of that property. So, we won't forget that those are due us, but this is just one in this, one of the four in the step process of, of getting the easements.
One of the stepping stones.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Okay, Commissioners? Do we have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the easement for Condo A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Well, thank you. City Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Thank you kindly. Next up on a new business, Resolution 2024-01 statewide mutual aid agreement. I guess it's our fire chief?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and read that resolution as he's walking up.
Okay.
This is Resolution 2024-01, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, adopting a statewide mutual aid agreement, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of Resolution 2024-01 by title only.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. This is the agreement that I brought to you all at the workshop. It's just a statewide mutual aid agreement. We consistently been in, in an agreement with the state, and again, it just allows us to receive any kind of support we need for a natural disaster or man-made disaster, and it allows us to offer assistance as well.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Okay, I guess we need to, do we have a motion to accept?
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-01, state mutual aid agreement, dash 2023.
Thank you kindly. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you kindly. City Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up, do we have any staff reports?
No.
Okay. And then next up, we have the agenda setting for our March 27 workshop. And it basically consists currently of JPV zoning, CRS, and LMS, the master plan, Board of Commissioners policy handbook, review for any changes. Let's see, RFP 2024-02, city facility cleaning services bid discussion. And then RFP 2023-14, coastal groin restoration bid discussion. And then we need to add what?
Residential parking discussion? Is that what you were going to say?
That, that's one of the two we need to add. And the thing that I appreciate the Commission let me pull this ordinance 2024-02, the open accessory structures.
Correct.
We need to add those two items, please.
Mayor, we also have two ordinances that got added from the city attorney regarding special magistrate code enforcement and variances.
If I could just give you a little bit of background on that?
Please.
So, so in reviewing the code, I have found that there are a couple of places in the code that need to be updated to make it current with Florida state statute. And the provisions that I'm talking about are the special magistrate provisions relating to code enforcement. So I've drafted that ordinance and I would like to bring it to you at the workshop and explain it to you, the changes and the reasons why. In addition to that, there is a provision for the special magistrate under variances and special exceptions to make it in sync would have to be changed as well. So we're bringing you that. And lastly, it's, it's, there's a necessity to reappoint the special magistrate. You're to do that on an annual basis. And so I'm going to be bringing to you the fee agreement and discuss with you his reappointment. So I'd like to add that so that you have some discussion of it before it comes to you at a regular meeting.
Okay, so three items. All right.
Yes, sir.
Not a problem.
Okay.
We also have one additional first reading, or I'm sorry, discussion of an ordinance to amend our fees and collections procedures manual specifically to add a, an inspection fee in our building department for the tall, three stories or taller condos, the, as a result of the Surfside incident. And I, it's escaping me, the term for the kind of, not millennial inspections, but at certain interval inspections. So we currently don't have a fee when our staff goes out and performs those inspections. So we'll.
Non-destructive testing, maybe?
Oh, there's, it's inspection. I can't think of the term.
Understand.
Something, I mean, you hire an engineer, then we review that engineer. Yeah, it's structural inspection, but there are, at certain intervals of time.
Absolutely, to avoid what happened over on the other coast.
So we'll bring that, since we're starting those, we're at that point in time that we will be beginning those inspections. We typically bring you the fees and collections once a year unless there's a need, such as now, to add these fees to begin those inspections. And I think at the last work, member of workshop or the prior regular meeting, you'd also discuss, an item to discuss bicentennial park. We did have a resident come up and ask if we could, what could be done with that. So if you wanted to discuss that at that workshop or the April workshop, one of those two, we'll add it. We're getting kind of.
Next one's crowded. You might add it to the.
Yeah, I think so, the April. Okay, I'll add it to the April one. Which, just very quick, that property is owned by the school, Pinellas County School Board. So we need to reach out to the Pinellas County School Board.
This is about the kayak launch.
Pretty much all of bicentennial park is part of the parcel that houses the Madeira Beach Fundamental School. And according to the Florida Department of Transportation, the Pinellas County School District also owns the pedestrian overpass, which, interesting, they may, they may have obtained permission from DOT to have it added whenever that was added years ago. But so they, that ownership extends to the Pinellas County School District from what I've been told. But we'll clarify and then when we have the discussion about the park. Because again, we, it's not ours. We've simply been, pretty much two things that we've done out there, maintain the, kind of the cleanliness, the mowing and the, maintaining the trees, the shrubs, and then emptying the trash, putting trashcans out there and then emptying them. That's been the extent of our work. Even when the county, the Pinellas County Sheriff asked us to use it, we directed them to go speak to the Pinellas County School District for the boat demolition-type work that was done on that property. I think those are all the items that, for that meeting.
Okay. Next up, reports and correspondence. Board of Commissioners, we have anything? City Attorney?
Nothing today.
City Clerk?
I do. I want to remind everybody that we have an election Tuesday. Wow, for our charter amendment.
All right.
And also in the clerk's, my clerk's report, I started doing a summary for the year of keeping the items separate. That way, we see what items have been added and what we've talked about. And that was a suggestion by Vice Mayor Kerr. And I put a link on there where you can read, reminding you about the Form 6 information that's on there. Probably everybody has been notified and created your account with the Florida Commission on Ethics. And we're, we've advertised the Civil Service Commission vacancy again. And so I'm hoping to have that at the April meeting with some applications.
All right.
We have one vacancy, zero applications so far.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, well, thank you so much for your report. All right, City Manager, do you have anything?
And if you do get to read the growing update that the clerk provided, it kind of gives a good.
It has a history.
Yeah, good background on the, as several people told me, you need to come up with a different name. But the structures that are out on the sand, the beach groins. Just in the last couple of weeks, I probably had 40 or 50 people, I guess, as I've been explaining what's been happening, people are like, what are you talking about? And so my first reply is, so you haven't been out on our sand just yet? Well, but either way.
And that's why we have the sand.
That's why we have the sand.
Yes.
So my apologies. I will email you our February City Managers update. I was waiting for some information to add, but I'll have it for you by Friday. But just a few quick updates on the month of February, which is typically our transition month where we kind of go, we start to get a lot more visitors and, I mean, everybody starts to see that as well. We did conclude, as one of the residents came up and thanked the city for the work, concluded the Gulf Lane Road Project, which included the parking lots from Johns Pass Park at the southern end up through 130th, on the west side of Gulf Boulevard, all the way up to 135th. So the parking lots that are on the west side, with the exception of at 132nd, the part, the small parking lots that are on the west side of Gulf Lane. If any of you have not been to any of, we did make, and I think I had shared with each of you, but maybe some time ago, we did have to make two changes at two of those lots on the west of Gulf Lane, where the parking spaces were previously, I guess I will say perpendicular to the pedestrian beach access. The spaces are now parallel. And that we've gone in one of the locations from four spaces to two spaces. The other one, I think, went from three to two. We had really to do that, just one for safety, but also not enough space. Back to Mr. Edwards' comment about the length of a parking space because vehicles seem to have gotten longer, well, particularly trucks with hitches or whatever they may have. So that's a reason why they'll look a little bit differently. We are waiting for some additional security, well, security, identifying marks at one of them because it is directly in front of one of the beach access points. Even though there's paint and there's a sign, we are going to add a few more kind of bollards and just to make it easier for any, for folks to see as they're walking out. We received our permit, as I had mentioned also, from the US Army Corps for the groins. Well, we received that in January. But in February, we went through the process of reviewing the eight replies to the RFP for, to do the work. Most of that work happened in February and we should, at the next workshop, we are bringing the recommended firm to begin that work. Also, in addition to kind of the normal beach cleanups and other beautification, public works continued with more plantings and a few parts, like at 133rd, that little.
Cactus garden.
Yeah, cactus, but the little median, the heron. And again, those continued throughout February and will continue for the next few months. We had to, due to weather, move the, toward the end of the month, the final Friday, inside to the caddies at Johns Pass Village. There was a potential for wind and rain. So it was decided right at the, about halfway through that day to do that. I did receive a request from, at the other end of the village, which I think all of you are aware, for final Friday, we've, this year, past year, we expanded it so allowing the Bamboo Beach Bar at the northern end, where Village Boulevard dead ends in that circle, for them to put up a stage and participate in, as part of final Friday. And it has, the only concern I received is what I'm bringing up, a recent concern because I did, I received a request and I allowed for the Bamboo Beach Bar to leave their stage at that area until the 17th of March. When I look back at my notes, I had written down through the 23rd of March. I just need to clarify whether I told them the 17th or the 23rd. But they did ask back in the middle of February, hey, could we?